Moving on next, our next group. Thank you very much, Bill. We are recording this now. Our next group to present is the Recreation Board. I believe that Hannah Flannery is joining us online and via Zoom. Hannah, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you guys hear me?
Absolutely.
Okay, I'm on multiple devices because for some reason my video doesn't work on my computer. So, and I apologize that all of us are not there in person. We did a few events over the weekend and well, that's that. So we're not able to be there in person. So to all parties concerned, my name is Hannah Flannery. I'm the current Chair of the Reedfield Recreation Association. COVID has shown a profound need for a recreation facility in the town of Reedfield that's free and accessible for everyone. This past spring, the Reedfield Rec Association reached out to Mainland Development to look into how the plan that they had developed in 2009 could be revived. Our fairgrounds complex was established and approved for the current baseball field by the Planning Board in 2013. At that time, the broader plan completed by Mainland Development included a softball field, a parking lot, a playground, and a volleyball court. In the end, the baseball field was all that was built. Taxpayers approved funding to start the second ballfield project this past June 2021. So there is support and a demonstrated need. Currently having the fields available that we need to support the teams that we field in a spring season is a definite challenge. This past season, the lack of fields challenge sent us more than a couple of our teams to Mount Vernon to use a less than desirable field just to be able to practice. Our vision of this development would forego the playground and volleyball court as included on the first plan. We feel the beach property is a more suitable location for these amenities. Our vision would keep the softball field in the back as per the original sketched plan, but also add a basketball court in the front closer to the parking lot. A snack shack is also on the plan, although not the first priority. Looking not only from the Recreation Association needs, but in regards to Reedfield Heritage Day events, having all these amenities at this central location would fuel so much more activity and involvement for the town and community as a whole. The village center location of this development has a multitude of benefits. The convenience of one central location for parents, not only of our town, but of all the leagues that we compete against is ideal. Multiple towns in our league not only have all the fields in one complex, but the snack shack, which is a relief for busy parents when you're running from practices to games for multiple children. The central location of this complex would provide a connection to the school trails, obviously the trails to the beach, to the library, and just central access to go everywhere in town. We feel there's no other logical place to put this field that we so desperately need for our softball teams. Another part of our vision is to develop a summer slash day camp to provide affordable daycare for the parents in town. The part of this day camp would also have the facilities amenities. Having those would be helpful to run camps for all the sports and more for our community. This past June, kids had to actually travel to Augusta to the Y for a basketball camp that could have been easily hosted and an outdoor court if it had existed. The convenience and access from the beach, the complex will also benefit the day camp that's accessible by the trails. This is why we would propose to have a full development with field and basketball court. Long term, we can see use of this complex all year round. While Reedfield Rec supports three seasons of sports with soccer, basketball, and baseball softball, in the spring, we also host an Easter egg hunt. So we use a large field, which is ideal for this event. Looking at future events for Heritage Days, having more field capacity would allow for more events, a complete kickball tournament for one with multiple games going on, or a 5K event and more of those types of things. We're happy to look at how we could do more to benefit the health and well-being of our community. Working with the Trails Committee, I believe having this complex more developed would aid in snowshoe and cross country skiing and other accessibility in the winter months as well. In the end, having a healthy community from the youngest preschools kicking around a soccer ball to the older folks walking the trails is what is most important to us in developing this complex to be used by many more folks in our community. Our evaluation as completed by Mainland indicates that the total non-revegetated area in the end, including the ballfield trails and parking lot that already exist here, is a total of 1.1 acres. If we're just looking at the land in the fairgrounds complex, that's 1.1 of 36 total acres. When we look at the total acres compared to all municipally owned property, we're talking a total of 1.1 acres of hundreds of acres. The benefit of providing recreational fields and amenities at the fairgrounds can easily be balanced with the need to maintain conservation lands, which make up the bulk of publicly owned and publicly accessible lands in Reedfield. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Hannah. We appreciate that. And we will hear from any other REC members. I suppose you still have about a minute or two left. Any other members here in person? All right, then we shall move on. Number four, our fourth group to present this evening is the Cemetery Committee. Our representative is Ben. Hey, man, how are you? Good. We will, if you don't mind. Ben, we just mentioned earlier that folks want us to be nice, loud, and clear. If you don't mind speaking right into that microphone, we appreciate it very much. You have about eight minutes to summarize what you think. If you don't need that much, that's fine, but I'll throw a hand up if you get too close.
Sounds good. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
I don't have any prepared remarks, unfortunately. And this would be the first time anyone's ever hearing of this. But the Cemetery Committee and I have discussed it in passing, the possibility of looking at in the future to setting aside some space somewhere in town, a option for green burials, which in just the town over Fayette, the Kennebec Land Trust has started the Baldwin Hill Conservational Burial Ground. And of what I've heard, it seems to be pretty popular and looking at ways to accommodate any changing shifts in individuals thinking of or envisioning a different way of being laid to rest as opposed to cremation or full burials. To be able to provide that as an option as it begins to grow more and more in people's minds, I think it would be good to, you know, proceed, like, look into it. I've got some information here if people are interested or haven't heard about it. Like I mentioned, this is the first time anyone's ever hearing about this. But I think in looking forward to the eventual needs for space, this could be an option to be a step ahead or at least allow the public to be aware of this option in the future. That's about it.
Thank you, Ben. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Absolutely. We move on now to the section listed as other boards and committees. This would be age-friendly Heritage Days, which I will be speaking about, but I know that I see a Romaine Turin. Romaine, I wondered if I may throw it over to you to speak a little bit about the Age Friendly Committee and how your vision of the fairgrounds can support tonight's conversation.
I sure will.
Thank you.
I don't have prepared remarks either. My apologies. I just kind of zoomed in to participate. But, but I will say that the Age Friendly Committee views the fairgrounds as community property and for the community to use. And we have done a number of things, contributed to the fairgrounds, we think, to make it a more livable community for people of all ages. And that has been our focus. And just to kind of refresh your memory about that is that we did write three grants that funded several different things for the fairgrounds. We, one of the grants purchased bleachers, benches, and picnic tables that are scattered throughout the fairgrounds. We also purchased a bike rack that is there for kids. I don't know how many seniors use the bike rack, but we did do that. The Age Friendly Committee also planted a tree in, on, in recognition of the bicentennial. So we planted a tree, and I think you've all heard me talk about the bench that was just recently placed atop of Suicide Hill with a little plaque so people can overlook the lake and the fields. And it's very peaceful and very calming. I guess the one, the one point that I would make is that we proceeded to do these things to make the fairgrounds more livable for people of all ages and never really realized that there was a formal process to go through to proceed to, you know, to make improvements or enhancements to the fairground. I think just by our nature, we always reached out to the Conservation Committee or we reached out to the Trails Committee just to solicit ideas. And I generally always presented something to the Select Board before we submitted a proposal. But I guess my comment would be that if there is a process, it's not really that well-known. So I just, I just kind of throw that out for your consideration. You know, in terms of, in terms of the future, I mean, we haven't, we haven't really talked about any future grant opportunities to pursue. But, you know, one of the things that might be nice, and I don't know if this, if anybody's thought of this, or if there's even a need, but one consideration would be like raised bed community gardens. And it's not, not so much that people don't have their gardens at their home, but a raised bed would help people. And it also would be a real social thing where people could come and work on their gardens and see people. I know the fairgrounds served a huge purpose during the pandemic where the people walking, people would arrange times to meet and walk and just meet there so they could be outside. But, so that, that would just be one vision that could, if there was a need, and obviously we try to determine whether there is a need or not, but that would be just one idea.
Great. Thank you very much, Romaine. Are there any other Chairs of Committees or Boards present that would like to speak to the future use of the fairgrounds? In that case, I will speak on behalf of the Heritage Days Committee. The, and I will tie myself as well. The Heritage Days, Heritage Days, for the most part, I feel like has really, really seen some successful past couple of years. I think this year with having the Oxen Pole and that sort of thing, which was great, and the, the number of people we saw at the beach, which I thought was really great in terms of coming down to see all of the vendors and sort of having a nice variety of things to look at. I think that the best part about Heritage Days is that it puts Reedfield on display. And luckily for us, there's a lot to see in Reedfield that is fantastic. So the display is usually pretty great. But I think there, that one of the reasons why over the past few years we have tried to use the beach area as the highlight area of Heritage Days, sort of the after-party, if you will, after something goes on at the fairgrounds ballfield is because the beach has a little bit more in terms of like electricity. There are bathrooms at the, the beach as well. So there are some things that make, that were drawn to the beach, which is why we had the Heritage Days the past couple of years, the beach. What I think is, we could do, we could have the, the fairgrounds be the focal point of Heritage Days. And, and as long as there was one place where everyone could kind of go. And I think the connection to the beach is also good. But in terms of having, you know, Heritage Days be a part still of the fairgrounds, I think obviously that's something we'll always have. I think finding different ways, like Hannah mentioned, the past couple of years, prior to the 2018, we had a kickball tournament, which is always a fun time. Kids love that. And we did some things there. There's been talk about having a 5K as part of Heritage Days, which we would be able to utilize the, the trails and things like that for as well. So there's just a number of different things. I think the fairgrounds and Heritage Days go hand in hand. I think they both work well together. And the future would be to see, you know, it would be nice if there was some electricity up there and, and some bathrooms and things like that. But, you know, at this, I was, I was kidding the other day. At this point, well, there are no trashcans, so we're still working on that. But I think the, the way that the future looks for Heritage Days and the fairgrounds is very bright and symbiotic, that relationship. Good. And I didn't even use my whole time. That's it. We have heard from all of our committees and interested stakeholders in their visions for the fairgrounds. We move now to public comment. This would be an opportunity for folks who are present, who are online. And this is also an opportunity, Lauren, if you're still there, if you would like to speak. We're going to limit our, we have 25 minutes for this. We do have some extra time, but we're going to limit our public comment to somewhere around three minutes, if you don't mind, just so that we can get interested parties together if people have other stuff to say they can. But we would entertain folks from the public. Is there anyone here who would like to speak? All right. Hello, Chris. I see you waving. Yes, hello.
We, we were trying to get it on video and something.
Yes. Oh, you did a very good job. We can hear you and we can see you. If you'd like to go ahead and address everyone.
And I'm here with my husband. I just want you to know.
Hello, Chris.
We, I'm Chris Olson, and we are a butters to the fairgrounds. We live on the old Fairgrounds Road. That's my, our house that you, on the trail, you could see our house.
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to thank you for having this open discussion. It, as a butters and, you know, real users of this trail system, which we loved during the, you know, this pandemic. We're, we, we just want to say that, you know, we're very, we really like the natural areas. We enjoyed watching the fox out in the field. We can appreciate the fact that there's a, a ballfield that, that is buffered from the trail, kind of, and, and that people listened to us in this neighborhood. By, you know, there's no loudspeakers. There's no, you know, the, everything was being handled. We were very surprised that they want to put in a new, you know, that there's a proposal for another ballfield. And it may be that I don't understand the, the ballfield issue, but it's rarely used. And it's used more like, a lot of people bring their dogs there, like it's a dog park. We could hear kids out there, maybe a few games at certain times of the year, but mostly it's empty. I like the idea of all the variety of uses. And I'm a little concerned that another ballfield really limits flexibility. It's a lot of development on really the only area where there is open land. I mean, the forests are wonderful, but it is full of wildflowers and, you know, what Jerry was talking about. I also like some of the ideas that Romaine had as a meeting area. We don't really have a town meeting area. And I love the picnic benches and the bench that they put up on the hill we use right away. It's just wonderful. So I like the idea, and I'm glad that it's in the comprehensive plan for the, for the area, or at least for the Conservation Commission, of looking at all age groups because truly this, this fairgrounds gets, gets used a lot by, by old people.
Yes. Well, thank you very much, Chris. We appreciate your input and sharing that with us. Are there any other members of the public who would like to address us? Absolutely, right here in person. Go right up there and state your name and speak right into the microphone.
Hi, this is Marty Hanish. I'm on the Conservation Commission and Budget Committees. But I'm speaking now as an individual. It seems like a million years ago, before COVID, I went to visit my cousin in Manhattan. And we walked around the city a lot. And everywhere, you know, we, we went, we saw the remnants of old buildings, you know, spaces between buildings that were just filled with rubble. And we were playing this game, wouldn't this be a nice spot for a restaurant? Wouldn't this be a nice spot for a bodega? Wouldn't this be a nice spot for a little pocket park? And those were really slam dunk questions because what was there at, you know, at that time was of no value to anyone. And I don't think that's the case when we look at adding other uses to the fairgrounds. What's there now is of value that, you know, and we'll hear more about that from the naturalists. So I think the best way, when you're looking at two proposals that have values, where it's not just a slam dunk, is to carefully and faithfully follow all of the criteria for alternate uses that's laid out in the Fairgrounds Management Plan. So I'll stop right there.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Marty. All right. Lauren, you may speak if you would like.
Is that me?
Yes, indeed.
Okay. Hi, this is, this is Laura Lecker, and I just wanted to say hello to everyone, virtually anyway. And I'm really impressed with everybody's presentation. And it's been, it's really great to hear all of the good things that are going on out there. Again, I think you have all seen the report that I did for the Conservation Commission. I did just want to say that absolutely the, you know, small bit of grasslands that you have out there do certainly have ecological and wildlife value. Grasslands are growing more scarce across our landscape all the time. And I, I am here in an advisory and helpful capacity only. So I am more than happy to answer any questions or help in any way that I can. And I really appreciate the Chris's comments and Jerry's comments. And again, I'm more than happy to answer any questions about the specific benefits of the grassland. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you being there. And if anyone else, is there anyone in person? Yes, ma'am, please, if you'd like to go up to the podium and just say your name nice and loud and tell us who you are.
My name's Amy Cunningham. I'm a member of the REC Committee. I'm also the middle school softball coach, as well as a REC softball coach and a Coach Travel softball. So I want to go back to why there is a need for a separate ballfield. But I know that, I guess I didn't realize, growing up playing sports, that a lot of people don't realize there is a difference between a baseball field and a softball field. There's difference, the infield are built different, the lines, the distance between the bases and home plate are different, the pitching mounds are set up different. A baseball mound is actually built up. It's higher, it's rounded. Softball, you pitch from a flat location. You cannot use, especially in Little League Baseball, 12U, 14U softball, you cannot use the same field. It's just not built to do the same thing. The group of girls I coached now, sixth, seventh, eighth graders into the spring, I started coaching when they were second, third, and fourth graders. We would go to our field at RES, which we, we can't do anything to, as the REC Committee. It's not our field. We have, it's not up to us to fix it. We, that's not in our hands. This is why we're looking for a separate field. For these girls, we would go and we'd pull weeds so they could feel the ground ball without it bouncing up in their face because there's not supposed to be grass on a softball infield. We would pick rocks and throw them out to the sideline, which would get blown back by the volunteer that would come and mow it when they had time, which again is school property, which should have been being done by the school. So we did what we could, and then we go to monuments where they have a facility, where they have a field for baseball, softball, and T-ball. And these girls said, wow, you know, the boys have a really nice field in town. Why don't we have a nice field? Why aren't the girls being represented? Where's our field? Are the boys better than us? So during the pandemic, REC had very few options as where to go. I coached travel. I would love to do in this area, but nobody would let me put a team on their school field. That's the only option you have in this area. And with the pandemic, you couldn't use school fields. So these are some of the reasons that we need another field at the fairgrounds. Among the, the main ones, it's already been, you know, there's been plans. It's been looked into. Somewhere along the line, people saw a need for it. And I really think we need to consider it, like, and make our girls feel represented. That's the biggest issue is they're not feeling represented in this town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your getting up there. We would still entertain anyone? Absolutely. Yes, indeed. Right up there to the podium. Thanks, sir. State your name nice and loud.
Yes, my name is Sean Roderick. I live on Forzarella Lane in Reedfield. And thank you for having this tonight and giving us the opportunity. Having opportunities for young people has been a passion of mine for a long time. I've talked to the town manager in length, Hannah, I'm on the school boards. I can only be on so many committees and places at once, but it is a passion. My family is a big user of the trails, the ballfields, any fields we can use, the swim. And for me, it's, for me, it's about giving opportunities for all kids in the town of Reedfield. My kids are, I guess, fortunate, way to put it. We can take them to other places to participate in REC activities, to play softball, to play baseball. But they ask, why can't my friends do that? And why can't we do this in Reedfield? We can. There's a little, you know, I read all the information. I've read the, there's some, you know, different, people have different ideas, but you can still, I feel it would draw more people to the fairgrounds property to use the trails. We walk on the trails a lot during the pandemic and probably a lot before that. Our kids and our dogs and we jog and I think they're, you know, and having the trails, the ballfield, the basketball court, I still try to play basketball. It's not just for the kids. My, my kid Pepe, he still plays basketball. I mean, he's not a resident of Reedfield, but he would go. That's an opportunity for everybody. And maybe, you know, my daughter and my wife want to walk the trails. They can do that at the same time. It's 1.1 acres, being, yeah, there's some grassland, but it was trunk or treat last night. People were parked on that grass. We're not talking, this is, I mean, it's beautiful land. We are very fortunate to have a lot of trails and stuff in Reedfield, but we need to be providing opportunities for everybody, from the youngest kids to the young ladies in our community. That is a shame to me. I mean, it really is. It's nobody's fault, but I hear it. I hear it from my daughter's friends. I hear it from just being in the community. Why don't we have a softball field? I hear it of kids who want to play basketball, that go outside and hang with their friends. And, you know, there's crosswalks. And all this can be together. People, we need to sit down and solve. It doesn't need to be, we just need trails or we just need that. And having it so the kids can go down and having a REC program, there's opportunities where those kids could be provided meals. The list goes on and on. It doesn't have to be one group versus another. When who's better and who's wrong and who's right, who has the best expert. And my day job at work for the legislature, you can hire experts to tell you anything. So thank you for.
Thank you very much. I just want to share this. This was forwarded to us from the town website, and I think it falls under public comment. This is from a town resident, Kristy Sniffen. And it says, "I strongly agree with the Recreation Committee's proposal to add a basketball court and softball field to the fairgrounds property. This will provide additional outdoor recreational opportunities for the children of Reedfield and their families, which will enhance our community as well as the emotional and mental health of our children." So I just felt like that would be something to share as public comment. We would continue to hear public comment. If there's anyone online, you can raise your hand if you would like. Go ahead. Greg, right up there to the podium and nice and loud, sir.
Trying to be.
Yes, sir.
Greg Durgan, I'm on the Conservation Commission, Trails Commission, and I'm an employee of the RSU 38. When this all came about, I was interested in who, question was asked at a meeting, who owns the ballfield at the school? I approached our town manager, who had a very strong opinion and answer. It's the school property. So as a school employee, I went to Sean Drinkwater, who is the director of maintenance, field, overseeing everything else at school. And he was, he was open to the suggestion of the REC Department building a field at the school property, the Reedfield Elementary School property. And I passed that on to Hannah in the REC Department. And I passed that on to Hannah in the REC Department. The second thing I wanted to mention was, when the ball field was approved, it was approved finally by the Planning Board. And the, I know Eric has a copy of that decision on what can be there and what can't be there with the current ball field. So I just want to make sure that people knew that. And that's it. Good luck with your deliberations.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Excellent. We are still hearing public comment. If there is someone on Zoom who would like to speak to us, you can raise your hand, make a noise, otherwise unmute yourself. Go ahead, Rob. Thank you very much. Yes, sir, you know the drill.
Yeah. I'm Rob Peel, I'm Chair of the Trails Committee. And I've also lived here about over 30 years now. And I have two sons who participated in all of the various sports offering in town over the years. I did not have a daughter, but even I heard talk and have heard talk for decades about the lack of a good softball field here. So I understand the frustration, I think, there. And maybe it's time to do something about that. The other thing is I did have a question for Lauren about fields. I know we have a small area of field on the fairgrounds. We have a lot of woods. And given that Maine is, I think, the most forested state in the Union, I keep hearing, would it be appropriate to actually get rid of some of that forest and create more grassland that could be managed for conservation purposes there? Does that make any sense whatsoever? I'm just throwing that out there. Have no knowledge myself.
Yes, we will await, Laura, your answer to that.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we sure can.
Great, okay, thanks for that question. The answer to that is, it depends. It depends on what the soil types are and that sort of thing, whether land could be cleared and used for grassland, but that is an option in some areas that some folks are doing in terms of increasing their grassland footprint or even creating new ones. So that, that is something that could be considered depending on, you know, the soils and the, and the topology that's around there.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Are there any other Zoom members? Oh, go ahead. Yes, sir, absolutely. We have someone in person here. Please go on up there, state your name nice and loud for us.
Andy Walsh, I'm with the Conservation Commission. There's really a question, just following up on the public comment. It sounds like you can make comments on the website pertaining to this issue.
That is correct.
The other question is, how long would you be receiving comments on this particular matter?
As long as we get them, I suppose. I mean, I just got these today from Eric. They were forwarded to me. I suppose we would.
Just a quick response to that. I'm not sure about the particular issue, but the comment form is a live form. It is always available. So folks can provide comments at any time on any issue. So there's always opportunity for comment using that method. As far as the particular deliberations, I can't speak to that. But so far, the board has never turned down a public comment that I'm aware of, so.
Ralph, did you have something to say?
I know it's not appropriate to jump in at this point because we're supposed to be listening to you, but wouldn't that timeline be driven basically by the budget process? Because there may be some budget considerations that would be made for future development that would require a decision.
I guess I can't answer that. I think, you know, it's public comment, so it's open.
So it's, I guess it's ongoing.
Just one other comment.
Yes, sir.
Following up on Laura's report and the value of the grasslands. I think something else to consider is the educational opportunities there to the school groups to learn about pollinators, monarch butterflies, all of which are in decline in abundance now. So I think they're taking on greater importance and probably will get the attention of people as well.
Thank you. I think it's you, Jerry. Go right up there, absolutely, if you'd like to speak.
Jerry Bly, I'm in the Conservation Commission. Just a couple additional comments. One is, I want to be clear, the Conservation Commission has not taken any position on the proposed ball field. What we've done is exactly what the management plan requests and directs us to do. We've looked as to whether or not there's any alternatives. That's what Greg mentioned in terms of the possibility of a ball field being elsewhere. We've done research on the potential impacts. Laura's great work informing us as to the values of the field as a part of that. We reviewed an initial plan, which initially had a 16-foot slope going down right next to the trail. We commented on that. Is that something having a significant adverse impact on the trail? But we've not taken a position on it. We met with, with you and with Eric and thought that it's time to take, you know, a big picture look at the future of the fairgrounds. And, and that's why, why we're here. The second point I want to just make is, the previous plan from 10 years ago, that was never endorsed in any way, shape, or form by any town body, not the town meeting, not the Select Board, not the Conservation Commission or anything. It was a plan that was stuck on the wall of the stairwell there. And ultimately, the advocates for ball field came forward with the single ball field plan that was presented to the Conservation Commission, Select Board, was approved by both. We were supportive of that. We weren't necessarily the biggest cheerleaders for it, but we were supportive of that. And so I don't want the fact that something has been put on a blueprint to suggest that that is a, been a community process in any way, shape, or form. And then the last thing I just want to say, you know, there's some mention of percentages. This is 1.1 acres of that. I think that's really not an appropriate way to look at this. The fairgrounds is a special property to the town. It's special in all sorts of ways. It's special as a historic resource. Those fields and the view are part of that history. It's special as a recreational, outdoor recreational resource in terms of the trails. There are no other trail. We have wonderful trails in, in the town of Reed Field. There are many different types of trails. But the only trails of the sort that are at the fairgrounds are, are those there. And they're immensely popular, much more so than our more remote and rougher trails on other properties too. And then the fact that, you know, the, the field is a very precious resource, both ecologically, scenically, and otherwise. And our other properties, by and large, we have a small old farmstead at the town forest. But this is a special resource that not, you know, should not be seen in a diminished way. It doesn't mean there shouldn't be a ball field there. I, I have a very open mind on that. As I said, the commission hasn't come to a conclusion on that. But we should be well aware that in doing so, we're giving up something in the process as well.
Thank you very much, Jerry. Anyone else? Oh, go ahead, Bruce, if you'd like. If you are online and you want to speak up, just make sure you raise your hand or otherwise let us know. Thank you very much. Just state your name nice and loud, Bruce, you know the drill.
I'm Bruce Hunter, Chair of the Conservation Commission. Can you hear me well? Yeah. I was glad to learn a lot about the softball, softball field tonight and hear comments. But my impression had been going into this meeting, we're just going to stick to the fairgrounds and how we see that, and we would still go through process on the softball field. So I appeal to the Select Board that we don't end the softball discussion here, that we have more conversation. I think it's valuable. I'm not, I'm like Jerry, I'm not opposed to softball field. I like seeing kids play sports. I coached soccer in one way or another for almost 16 years in Reed Field since I came here in 1989, including starting a travel soccer program, much like your softball program. And I know how much fun that is for kids and how valuable this to the, the kids and the program, and the high school program. So I'm not opposed to building a good softball field. But I would just like to go through the process outlined in the Fairgrounds Management Plan. And not end this tonight. I think there's more good discussion we can have.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Appreciate it. Anyone else?
Dennis, if no one else wants to.
Oh, we got somebody right here, I believe.
Put me at the end of the line anyway.
All right. Is that Greg? Go ahead, unmute yourself iPhone, it says. There we go.
Okay, sorry, I had to switch devices.
Yeah, go ahead. You have.
I like to speak to the availability of fields. Once upon a time, I helped bring football back to this community. And I can tell you that there are certain times of the year, regardless of whether the school would like to give us permission or not, there was no space, there was no fields available even for a school sanctioned football team to practice. So I do know that there are times when that's a problem. The second thing that I'd like to talk about, it sort of references what Marty was talking about. I think it was very appropriate that he brought up Manhattan. We're not living in a concrete jungle here. We're living in rural Maine. Understand that this small grassland does, has turned into something of a pollinator habitat and a bird habitat. If left to its own devices, it would go back to become a burial forest. This town has over 1,000 acres of land under some sort of conservation agreement. And so I guess my suggestion is, is that understanding that pollinators are in trouble, understanding we also have a need for a ball field, we have to weigh things. We have, the town owns a 300-acre town forest. And I think Rob asked a question about, well, perhaps if we need to create more pollinator habitat, we already have a field up there that maybe needs to be assessed by somebody. And perhaps that field could be managed and developed and planted so that it would better support these kinds of things. And so I just hope that going forward that these, you know, these different interests can sort through this so that we can have a facility and a process that really improves the human environment here. Because the location of the fairgrounds and the trails there that pretty much create a nexus for the, the village area, the school, and the beach, that, that location is very, very critical and can't be duplicated anywhere else in, in this community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Is there anyone else? Hannah, would you like to address the audience?
Yeah.
You have your three minutes?
Yeah, I just want to clarify a couple of things. In revisiting the mainland development, we have not formally put forward any sort of proposal. So I think that was misunderstood by whatever rumors got spread around town or however that got presented. We were simply looking at the possibility of what could be developed there. And that's where this discussion is today. The second part, I would like to go back to what Jerry said in that they do not disagree. I have a letter from August of this year where the Conservation Commission wrote me specifically as the head of the REC Department and said they could not support our proposal at this time. So I just wanted to clarify that. There was word put out that they were not in support of what we were doing. That's all I have to add.
Thank you very much, Hannah. Is there anyone else? Go ahead, Rosalie, you may go to the podium. Yes. I am so glad that you said that. Eric, do we have maps?
Yeah.
It's online, it's on the website. We, we have one here, but I think this is just Carol printed that out.
Yeah, so we have maps a couple of different places. The town website's a great resource. We have paper copies here at the town office showing all the recreation, conservation areas in town, easements. And it has, they actually just updated this recently. It's a fantastic resource to identify not just where the land is, but what is happening there, some of the historic pieces. So those are available online. Also, if you go to the Conservation Commission page, there is a specific map there. And they have it broken up into two parts. You have the background and you have the map. So we also have some parcel maps too that we can look at. But had you wanted to look at something tonight or more of a reference point?
I mean, it would be nice to see something tonight, but.
Yeah, so I can, I can, I can share my screen a little bit here and pull up that map as I did put a couple here.
Eric, just asking for clarification on that. When I hear it's on the website, that doesn't really help me a whole lot. Where on the website are these, like, are they under Fields and under Conservation, which is under Boards and Committees, or?
Yeah, so, so, thank you, yes. www.reedfieldmaine.org, that's where you start. You can search out Conservation and that would get you quickly to where you want to be. But if you go to our Boards and Committees page and then click on Conservation Commission, they have a link right on their page, right on the main, main portion of the page. But what I can do here is I will share my screen. I can show. The link has also been shared in the Zoom chat. Oh, man.
Thank you.
Just a second here.
You're welcome.
All right. All right, so let me see if I can share my screen here. All right.
All right.
So folks should be able to see.
I don't know about that.
So on the screen now, Eric is pulling up. Come on over here, Rosie.
So this is the map that I was referencing. The descriptions are a separate file, but the paper copy has everything all together, I believe. And so this is just the town of Reed Field showing the Conservation and Recreation Properties. And I will see if I can zoom in here. Where's my map? Eric, up top, there, it says 40, 45%. Yeah, there you go. Sometimes it's the bottom, I don't know why it's, but, so we'll zoom in here. And you can see, this is Reed Field Corner.
It didn't zoom, Eric.
It didn't zoom. It's just slow.
You have a delay.
Yeah, heck of a lag. But so anyway, the, the area you see here, that where my mouse is, hopefully it's not moving, but it's identified as two and, or, excuse me, I'll zoom in a little bit more here. We have the, well, that was a bit much. Here we go.
We haven't caught up to that yet.
No, I know. I'll try to get it scooped in. Here we go. Okay, all right. This is the best view we have for the short term.
There we go.
So there we go. So 19 on the right-hand side is Water District's property?
Nope, we're in, we're in Pennsville.
Okay, all right.
Okay, now we're there.
The lag, it's this lag. I'm just going to wait a minute. www.reedfieldmaine.org, folks. All right, it looks like we're caught up now. Okay. So number 19 on the, on the left is the land that's owned by the Reed Field Water District. On the right-hand side, you see the cross and the number two. The number two represents the Reed Field Fairgrounds property. And the cross shows where the cemetery is. And it's not entirely clear on this map, but the town of Reed Field does own contiguous cemetery with this property that's, that's dozens of acres anyway. And so we have those two areas that are right next to each other. The area that's number seven is the Moranahook High School property, middle school property. And, yeah, so those are the, the areas that we were, I think, talking about tonight. But number two is, is the subject that we're focusing on mostly tonight.
Absolutely. So we have about two more minutes in our agenda for public comment. It seems like we have gotten everyone oriented, certainly. Thank you very much for sharing the screen. Thank you, Rosalie, for pointing that out. I would entertain any last members of the public who would like to speak. All right, Rob, go ahead, buddy.
Yes, so, so the, the map that I had just. Yes, so, so the, the map that I had just pulled up and that I referenced shows both conservation and recreation lands. They're, they're mixed in many cases. But the, the areas where we have easements are specifically highlighted. And this is for conservation type easements, not necessarily for trail easements. Those aren't, as far as I understand, clearly identified on that map.
So there is no, I know there are, say, subdivisions that have easements for natural territory. We don't have any map compiled all of that information.
We don't, but that's a really good suggestion. As we build our GIS capacity, I'd love to see a map that includes those type of easements, trail easements. Yeah, good suggestions.
Get Jean-Luc on the phone. All right. Since we have no other public comment, we are now at the point where we have an opportunity as the select board to continue and to have our discussion. And we have allotted 25 minutes for this. That's five minutes per select board member. And if anyone would like to start, I would recognize you. Sean, I know you're joining us at home. It might be easier for you if you would like to start us off.
Sure. I just have a quick question for Laura. I just wondered if, what other property areas we have looked at or assessed? Or is it just a parcel that has been discussed?
Hi, the only one that I have looked at is the one that we've been talking about tonight so far.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
I guess I'll.
But I am, I just wanted to say, whoops. I'm happy to, to do any other site visits, and I was just talking with Bruce too. If there's a need for a presentation for more information at a future date, I'm happy to do that as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Did you want to?
I was just gonna piggyback on that and ask, why was it just done, so with this, this little study was done just for the ball field? It wasn't done for all the town properties?
No.
Can you go to the mic, please?
Bruce Hunter from the Conservation Commission. So when we were presented with the first plan, we're basically a contour map, very good contour map, showing the placement of the baselines and the ball field. It was obvious the value that having a ball field would be. And we wanted to find a way to value the natural habitat of the property as well, so we could compare it on an equal basis. That's why we asked a biologist from the Somerset Slone Water Conservation District to look at it for us, and she was grateful came out and even was going through our report and come to talk to us tonight. It's just that it was, it's important to look at both sides in terms of value. And I think that it was a lot less known about habitat and the habitat than there is about the value of a softball field. So that's, that's why we did that.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thanks.
Carol?
Can I have a couple of questions?
Absolutely. Yep, you certainly can.
Is there a map of where the fields are proposed on the fairground site? I just, I'd like to visualize where they are in relation to the current ball field.
I can pull up a map that would show roughly where they are. Just one second here. We do have a parcel map. I think that was, I think that was on the website, but let me see if I.
I know. I skipped over him. Yeah, I'm sorry. And Eric, if you, I know you had mentioned to be in there somewhere, and I didn't call on you, so I apologize.
Yeah, no, I was just gonna say to Laura, I'd love to talk to you about a management plan for our old landfill site, which is basically grassland, and I'd love to see us do more with plantings or other, other work to try to improve that facility for, for habitat. But, but that's something I'll, I'll reach out. You have got your phone number. It's on the screen, so. I've got your email from the report. So thank you. Yeah. Let me, let me pull up the map showing, showing the parcel.
Are we actually voting on anything?
No, not at all.
It's just a discussion.
Yeah, just a discussion. In fact, we could have a binding vote in a workshop.
Okay, so I'm trying to go slow with my mouse so we don't have too much delay, but this, this is the parcel map showing the, the fairgrounds parcel. You can see the, up to the north, we have the cemetery, which is a contiguous. And that's actually one of the comments I was gonna make is that we do have town parcels that are contiguous. And one thing I really appreciate about this, this area is the, the kind of natural flow between the cemeteries, the trails, the conservation area. And it really has been, and is a great pleasure to work with all of these groups. They care deeply about what they do. And I'm just glad we're having this discussion tonight to talk about future use of the property. But anyway, back to the, the ball field, the area here, you can see right in the middle of the parcel, more or less, is the, is the, the current ball field, kind of moving my mouse around if you can see that. What this aerial doesn't show is the expansion of the parking lot that has been expanded. So basically imagine a doubling, a mirroring of that existing square gravel lot, but mirror it to the north. And so when thinking about the ball field, it's similar to, to think about it in a similar way, but mirrored to the south. So if you look at the, the ball field, certainly the infield and some of the outfield, that would be mirrored down in the southern part of the area. I think it would over, over, take away some of that tree line that's in the middle of the field from what I've seen of the, of the plans and extend down towards, towards the end. So essentially, it would, from what I recall, again, I don't believe there would be much tree removal. It would be almost exclusively conversion of, of an area from unmanaged turf to managed turf, although I guess in some sense, managing conservation lands is a management effort. But I mean, like mowing and cutting and that type of stuff on a regular basis. But so it's that area to the south that is where the, the second ball field is being proposed. And, and no matter what proposal is put forward, there would certainly need to be some fill there because there is a grade and some sloping down there. So, so that's the area that would be affected, Carol. Does that answer your question pretty well? Okay, and I just, one, one last thing I'll say is that there is a proposal that the rec board is working on. And there's going to be a complete process if and when that gets brought forward to discuss this with the neighbors, to bring it to the select board, to bring it again to the, to the Conservation Commission in a, in a more formal and proper way so that they can be a, you know, a discussion that's much more in line with the management plan that we have. And so I think that there, there is going to be a process going forward, but that doesn't have anything to do with the map.
Where would the basketball court be off to the left of that tree line?
It would be essentially to the south of the existing parking lot, as I understand. It would be somewhere, somewhere in the area. If, if any of you remember that, that plan that was on the, it was hanging out in the hallway here for like 10 years. I think Jerry's right. I think it never moved. But it was, it was, you'd walk by it when you keep the vote and stuff. But anyway, they had showed a playground to the south of the existing parking lot. I think the intent is that have the basketball court right there near the parking area. But again, there's a plan that's being developed or multiple plans being developed initially with the rec board and mainland development. Those are going to come through and be presented formally, I think, in, in multiple venues.
So Rob, spinning off of that, you said the Trails Committee said if it didn't encroach on the trails. So it looks like the softball field may not encroach on existing trails.
It won't, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's the reason I would like such plans to come directly to the trails. We may not have much of anything to say, if we can incorporate moving trails, so we can keep our leaves intact.
And you've done a lot of work recently on some of them. It looks like the proposed basketball court might be by the, the start of one of yours. But okay, just, just asking that.
Excellent. Bruce? Oh, wait. Yeah, go ahead. Yep, go right up there. Yeah, because otherwise folks at home can't hear you, and we know we don't like that.
Yeah. When Sean proposed this map to us, he said that that basketball field was just a placeholder. He said, don't pay attention to where it is. They still had to decide where they were going to put it.
Okay.
He described it as a placeholder.
All right. Thank you.
He put somewhere on the fairgrounds property.
That's correct. Yep. I'll just speak to that. It's correct, because when we first spoke to Mainland Trust, the, the purpose of having a conversation with them was to understand the management of the area in terms of DEP permitting. And so our goal with rec moving forward and paying for that process was to make sure that when we could have a conversation, that we had looked at what would we do to disturb the land? And it was based on the percentage of the, the growth that had to change. So we put a rough, you know, the size of a court and the size of a shack and a, and a softball because that's the land that we would have to use in order to apply for permitting. So it could move somewhere around the parking lot area. So yeah, that's correct.
Thank you very much. It's still the select board time. Is anyone, Ralph or Catherine, would you like to address anything?
I'd like to defer to Eric's comments that we didn't hear earlier.
I tried to work them in while I was getting the maps pulled up. Basically, I just said, I appreciate the, the effort and the dedication of everybody involved with us. I, I think it's important to think about this as a holistic piece of property because it is, you know, a contiguous lot between the cemetery and the, and the fairgrounds, and it does connect to so much else in our community. So I think it's, it's that, that broad look. That broad look is really important. And, and then I had to, again, wanted to ask Laura about, talking with her in the future about our, our our landfill, which actually I think is managed, I think, okay right now. It gets cut twice a year, but I think we could do more to think about that and try to be more active in, in making it a good habitat. So that was all. Thank you, Catherine.
Well, ideas. I think this is very timely, perhaps a little after the fact, because I think the process got started and all the players weren't in the loop. So this is very, very helpful. Now we have all the participants who have a stake in this here at hand. And the one thing we need to make sure we do is that as this unfolds, is to make sure that that information is shared with everyone so that we don't find ourselves in a situation like we did a little bit earlier on, and we don't have any surprises in the development process. The process is going to go on. We all need to be in the loop.
Thank you, Ralph. Karen, you raised your hand earlier.
A few things, yeah. First of all, I agree the kids do need places to gather. We have very few options in town besides the beach and the fairgrounds. Softball is one of the few sports that girls can play that is a not combat. I mean, the girls get rough in some of these sports, and some of the girls may not be into that. But softball is also one of the big sports that girls can dedicate to and is also highly recruited at college. It may be something that they can do. They, it needs a very specific space to be done in. Like soccer, you can run and kick a soccer ball mud anywhere, but you can't pitch a softball anywhere. I approach things with, here's someone that wants to do something. Here's someone that wants to do something else, and how can we solve this? It seems, I know that there was a mention of golden rod is important for the monarchs. I agree, we're not in an urban area. It seems that there's not a direction you can drive in in Reedfield where you don't see open spaces and you don't see forested areas. But maybe we can develop some more with some of these things. I think they said the milkweed and golden rod are essential. Perhaps even part of Heritage Days, we can have a plant sale with some of these species that seem to be important and proliferate all kinds of areas of them. Seems like there's some solutions we can do. I know basketball also, one of the few sports that special needs students have at the schools is basketball. There's a unified basketball team at the high school, which are students that can't compete in most other sports. I do know that they cannot find a court. I don't know if you guys know Big Ben Perkins, he's the star. And we try to get the kids together, and there's really not court space. When the schools are open, the teams have it kind of monopolized. And it just is a great sport for these kids to, to get out and run. And even just basketball players, that's why there's so many hoops and driveways is people just need to shoot and practice, but it's not the same as being on a court. The kids need things to do. People need to gather. I think it's a great space for all ages, all abilities. The fairgrounds was started as a gathering place for the, the community. It's historically got that kind of background. There's a lot of space there. I think everybody can get what they want. We just have to be open to others' concerns and ideas and find a solution, and I hope everybody can come together and, and solve the problem.
Thank you, Carol. Catherine, anything?
Yep. So I took a lot of notes so that I can remember what everybody said. And then I have some comments of my own. I'm curious about one thing that Jerry said, which is that the previous plan was never approved, the one that we talked about hanging on the wall forever. So I, I would like to go back and find out exactly what that was, and then look at what the, the plan was that was approved for. I think we kind of had a master plan that we pared down because we had a donation and we were trying to build a field using that donation. I'm not sure that we meant that the rest of the plan wasn't viable. It was just, we were only implementing a part at that time. But that doesn't mean it was formally approved. So I'd like to go back and find that out. I took note of a lot of different things that I knew people had been talking about, but I think to start off, I just want to say that somebody had to be first in starting this discussion. And since the discussion is about a softball field, it was the rec board who said, okay, we'd like to have a softball field. How do we do this? Well, if we want to start talking to people about it, we need to have something to talk about and something to show them. And so the way you do that is you start to develop a plan with somebody. It can be a sketch on a napkin when you're at a meeting or a restaurant, or it can be a developed plan, which is the way they went, going to mainland and I'm having something drawn up so that it could then be talked about. And I, I, my interpretation of what happened is, is that people saw that there was a plan and said, oh, this is the plan and it's approved and we didn't know about it. And that's not how I see it. I see this as it was a first step taking place and that people have been reacting to that. And I'm glad that that has now brought us here where we can all talk about it together, which is where we would have ended up anyway. Some important points for me in the plan. And I think we have to decide if this is the right plan for the town. Is this management plan the plan that we need? It's 25 or more years old, and most things in town are revised more often every 25 years. So I think that's something we should look at. There are quite a few things in the plan that aren't being followed. One of them that I noted was that all expenses for the plan have to be put through the Conservation Commission budget, and that's not how it's been going. Age Friendly has had funds come in through grants and Trails has had things that they've spent on that, and we haven't, we haven't ever followed the plan to the T. And I think it's worked okay that way. And so I just want us to be careful about trying to say that now's the time to follow the plan for a specific reason. I think as multiple people have mentioned, we need to be cooperative in consideration of each other's maybe competing proposals. It says that there weren't any identified species at the time, no critical wildlife or plant habitat has been identified on the property. The scenic values are, the most important scenic aspect of the site is the view across the fields from the church road. An effort should be made to restore these portions and establish a regular maintenance program to keep the. and establish a regular maintenance program to keep the field open. As a couple people have noted, if we don't mow occasionally, it will become forest, and then it won't be a field for anything. So we have to find some happy ground of where we can mow to keep it as a field, but not mow so often that it destroys other possible uses for wildlife and so on. I guess my biggest issue personally is this whole idea of a central location. And should it be on this property or should it be somewhere else if we want to do more development of recreation purposes? And to me, the bottom line, as a town official, comes down to the fact that we don't own the school property. I was on the Select Board when we gave the school, our elementary school, we gave it to the school district. It was a gift, because we joined the school district. As a town, we can't build anything on property that isn't ours, because then we have no control over it. So we cannot build a ball field on school property. That's just the way it works. That's the kind of the rules that this board has to follow. So whether we want to or not isn't the issue. It was really disheartening this year. Well, lots of things were disheartening. So we won't go into a lot of lists in the last 18 months. But that the schools around the state decided that they had exclusive control over anybody using the fields. And I understand why they did it, but it really limited people in town. And we've heard that from multiple sources. And we have a beautiful resource available to us in the beach, in the fairgrounds, in the town forest, and other our cemeteries are great for walking in. And I think we have to do whatever we can to have opportunities for people of all ages and for people of all sex, both sexes, girls and boys. And I think we've done a really good job, as multiple people have noted, of providing things for the older set and not so much for the younger set. We've tended to leave that up to the schools. And I think Reed Field is big enough, maybe, that we need to look at some sort of a small summer recreation program to help support parents and to have recreation for all of the adults, not just those who want to walk. So I look forward to continuing this conversation, to looking at the proposal, and hoping that everybody will be considering consideration, give consideration to everybody's viewpoint.
Thank you very much. We have about five minutes left, and I'm going to take my opportunity. Thank you very much, Carol, Ralph, Eric, and Catherine, Sean at home for being here. Thank you all of the public who showed up in person, as well as everyone who is with us on Zoom. I echo a lot of what the rest of the Select Board has said. I think that we have a tremendous resource in the fairgrounds. And what I find particularly interesting is the way that that I think all of the groups that are involved in this conversation understand how much of a great place it is. I do like a central location. I've spent a lot of time studying the fairgrounds management plan, just looking at it and looking over it. And for, you know, a 26-year-old document, there is a lot, I think, that looks towards the future in this plan. There are also some things that I think are in conflict with the idea of a pollinator habitat and a butterfly place. As I look through this, on page two, it says, "No unusual habitat or rare plant or animal species were identified on the site." And that's sometimes through me, because I know that we're talking about the declining, certainly, pollinators in that area. But then, when I got to letter D, ecological, much like Catherine, it says, "No critical wildlife or plant habitat has been identified on the property. However, the mixture of fields, forests, and wetlands provides for a diversity of habitat." The the if the plan is how we're going to manage the fairgrounds, then I think having some other a portion of it sort of is in conflict there. But I think that the document looks to the future in a lot of good ways. The biggest way is that the town's comprehensive plan, and I'm quoting here, "Calls for directing future growth to the village area. Wise use of the fairgrounds property can help achieve this goal by providing open space, recreational opportunities, and other public amenities. The fairgrounds can help make the village area an attractive place to live and do business." I love that. I love that part of it. I also love this. "Second, the town's property's location offers the potential for the town to develop portions of the property for public uses that are best located in the village area, where they are easily accessible to residents." I think that's a great part of the fairgrounds management plan. And the last part I want to point out is this. "The important conservation values of the property should be safeguarded. However, this should not preclude the town residents from considering future proposals for developing some portion of the property for public purposes. A procedure for considering such proposals is outlined in this plan," and it certainly is. I hope that everyone understands how valuable this conversation is. And as we move forward, to find the best ways to continue to consider the vision and the use of the fairgrounds property. I think it's important for everyone to know that there's no reason to come out of tonight's meeting with an answer, but certainly knowing where everyone stands and knowing how everyone falls on, you know, the the idea of the interpretation as well of all of the various documents that govern this. That's that that's all that we have for our workshop time. It is eight o'clock. We are going to take a five-minute recess, and we are going to come right back, just a break, so we can have our Select Board meeting. Thank you very much. This workshop is over. We will have our regular meeting starting in just a little bit. Hello, friends. We are back. It's Monday night. It's November 1st, and we are doing our brief Select Board meeting. We are here, and we have five minutes for our first portion of the agenda, which is Select Board meeting approval minutes from October 18th. I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from October 18th. I second.
It has been moved and seconded to accept the minutes from October 18th. Ask submitted. All in favor? And Sean, I have to call your name. Sean Keegan?
Yes, sir. I'm in favor.
Thank you. I appreciate it. That's that's just the way we do it there. Thank you so much. We move on to item 22053. It's warrants 17 through 18. I think this is Catherine.
It is. Can I use your computer?
You certainly may. Let me pull up the packet. There we go. Here we go. All right. Here we go. See if that works. There we go.
I also got a paper copy here.
Oh, thank you. Yes, I'm sure she liked that better.
I'll use the paper.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
So reliable.
So it's just 17 and 18?
Just 17 and 18, yeah.
Okay, yes. So I reviewed warrant 17 and 18. Warrant 18 was for payroll and the amount of $19,706.83. Warrant 17 was for $85,102.68. Items of note, let's see. I want to make sure this is the right one. So we paid Pat Jackson, I believe, to pump out the tank at the transfer station. And I asked Teresa, and we do that usually twice a year. It wasn't a huge cost, but I thought it was interesting. We paid the Kennebec Regional Development Authority $16,637 for First Park. That is a full year payment, and the budget that was submitted by First Park this year was for a zero cost. So in the spring, we should be receiving a check back for that same dollar amount.
That is wonderful.
So that's even year.
I apologize, Kathy. What is First Park?
First Park is a regional.
Good question.
Development park located in Oakland.
Okay, I know that, then. I just didn't know anything close to here that was a First Park. Okay.
And we're stakeholders.
And we bought into it originally. We bought some more equipment for our public television station to from B and H Photo and Video for $881. We made a payment to the US Bank Corporate Trust in Boston for $17,715.20. That was for the Marana Cook Lake Dam project that we did a year or so ago. We paid $4,160 to Credity Flaherty. A little over 1,000 of that was for the property on Millstream. A smaller portion was dedicated to the solar farm development, and the largest part around $2,200 was for various issues around the town, special town meeting and vote in approving all of those things. So unless anyone has any questions, that's what I had. So I would move $104,809.51. Sense. So I can make sure I got the right thing.
It's been moved and seconded to accept warrants 17 and 18 in the amount of $104,809.51. Is there any further discussion? Go ahead. Yes, sir.
Is overtime beginning to drive up that payroll number? Because we haven't been able to fill Anna's position, because that $19,000 seems to be a little bit higher than the usual biweekly number.
I'll have to look. I don't know right off the top of my head, but I will say that we haven't had a ton of overtime. It might be something else. We might have paid stipends.
I was going to point out, the Select Board stipends went out in this most recent paycheck cycle.
So it's stipends. But but to the question of overtime.
Yeah.
We've been stretching, but we haven't been, we've been trying not to overexert, because one of the things we're worried about is over, over, overworking.
Yeah.
Our limited staff.
Burning out the folks who are with you.
So we 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 make ends meet, and I'm looking forward to, I've got an interview Friday for for the maintenance position. But that's the first one. We've only had two formal applications and one walk-in. And so I was holding off until we had three to even finish the process of of doing a a full review. But anyway.
Get us back on track here. It's been moved and seconded to accept warrants seven and 18. If there are no other discussion, all in favor in person? And Sean Keegan?
I am in favor.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. I appreciate it. We move on to item. Our next item is Select Board Communications. Do any of the members of the Select Board have anything to say?
I have two very brief, a big thank you to Eric and Ralph, who are working on assisting with the installation of the heat pumps. Found a little, a little kink in the works in needing to provide some additional support in the understructure, and they're working on that, and I appreciate that very much. Also, did not drive by the town Halloween events, but did drive through town last night and was absolutely thrilled to see at least 100 people out walking on the side of the road and on the sidewalk. They were both crowded. The kids and parents were out having a grand time, enjoying themselves, and it was such a treat after the previous year. So congratulations, everybody.
Go ahead, Carol.
Let's do a quickie. At the post office, just an update of what's going on there. Justine was really kind in giving us the window. Right now, we have several businesses displayed there. Fikes, Custom Meats, we have the Alpaca Farm, we have Nettie's Nook, we have Golden Compass CBD. There was another one that we haven't quite got together yet. I'll be putting in a note in the December newsletter, looking for things more after Christmas. Anybody know local plow people, things that would be seasonal massage places? I know we have some in town. And Justine's been really nice in actually recommending some people or one she helped facilitate, so I'm getting in touch with me. I had good feedback so far.
Thank you for doing that. Appreciate it. I just want to say quickly, if I may, Sean, did you have something to say?
Yeah, but you go quickly if you may.
All right. I'm sorry, buddy. I just happened to look up, and there you were. I just want to say that the trunk or treat and the activities that were done by the rec committee and everyone who helped out were fantastic and a great way of illustrating how our town comes together and and does stuff so well. And so I just, I just think it's so important for us to hear the good stuff that happens, because so often we hear about the the things that people are upset with, or we happen to see things plastered up on buildings about how things are. But I just think that when you are, when the rubber meets the road and when people are called upon to make this community better, there's never been a lack of folks to show how great this community is, whether it's helping out friends in need, children with disease or sickness, or whether it's making a holiday bright for kids. I think that that's one of the best parts about Reed Field. It makes me proud to be on this Select Board, and it makes me proud to be a member of the community. So I just want to say thank you to all those folks that made it happen, all of the hours that go in that nobody finds out about. We appreciate you and thank you for making our town better. Sean?
Thanks, Dennis. Two things I I'll start with. I tried to do some stuff with the transfer station fees on our website, and I do not believe they're current, so I'm hoping we can have a look at that. That was something that, when I was going, I had an issue with, and I spoke to Mike about it, the transfer station. And Ralph just so happened to be there fixing something, so we were discussing that. And then, you know what? One thing I'd like to say to, some of you already said it yet, this weekend's events were fantastic, and it was so much fun to be a part of. It was really great to see. The weather did not play into our favor, and many people had to make quick work to change many events. So thanks for everybody that stepped in to help make sure that we could still host those. I wouldn't be surprised if there were 600 kids went through that truck or treat yesterday. It was something else. I have, my kids have never, ever had that much candy. It was.
That's it. Well, thank you very much, Sean. I appreciate that.
I just heard a comment over here in the peanut gallery that there evidently was enough candy this year.
Nice. Thank you, Jonathan Raylo. John Raylo. Thank you, John.
I think 40 pounds of donations had the town office here, so at least 40, maybe even 50 pounds of candy. And there's still some left, so, yeah.
Well, now we're coming to the part of our agenda where we would listen to public comment. There is nobody here at the town office with us, but we know that Penny, Grace, and Jack look like they are here. If you would like to speak to us, you may do so now. Thank you very much. We move on to old business item 22049. This is Consider the Revised FY23 Budget Process. Eric, explain.
You made comments, and I made adjustments.
Thank you very much. We move on to our next, no, I'm kidding. That sounds great. I think it was mostly just timeline stuff, yeah, dates.
So I did revise the, we no longer are meeting on Valentine's Day now. We're meeting on the Tuesday following.
Thank you.
Valentine's Day.
Yeah.
And the meeting that was scheduled for the February 24th, I think, has been moved to sometime in early March, so that's outside of the school vacation week. So those two comments were were taken into consideration and acted upon. And then I did color code the Select Board, Budget Committee, and Joint Select Board and Budget Committee meetings.
I very much appreciated that. I'm sure Dennis loves it.
I love color coordination. I just have to tell you, it just, it's, my brain gets along with it well, so.
So my one request, before you move on, would be that the board could approve this. I can get it distributed far and wide to the Budget Committee, the other committees, and on the website.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget timeline as presented.
It's been moved. It's been moved and seconded already, as a matter of fact, to accept this budget timeline as submitted. Is there any further discussion? I just, I haven't had a chance to look at this for any kind of typos, but I will let you know. Oh, there we go. All in favor here in person, raise your hand. Sean Keegan?
I am in favor.
Thank you. Excellent. I need to hear it audibly, I suppose. We move on to our last item, which is 22051, Second Reading of the Revised Board Committee and Commission's Guide.
So a little explanation on this. This is actually not the full guide. This is a portion of what we received for additional information for the first two pages. And then the last piece is a policy that is included as a refer, as a, by reference. It's a, it's an appendix to the proper, the full, the full guide. But it's one that needs updating. It's our freedom of information, freedom of access. Freedom of access policy. We've had some changes in state law. That's a bulk of what has been proposed for changes to that document. That one we wouldn't be approving with this guide. I'll be presenting that formally at the 15th of November, the November 15th meeting. But I wanted to give you a heads up that it was a relevant and related and B that we were going to be taking a look at it later.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
So do you want us to have a first reading of that FOAA right now?
You certainly could if you if you wanted to, as well as the other items that were submitted for. Review, right? Catch catch everything up on the same level.
Well, I submitted a list of other. Changes, additions, corrections that didn't make it in. So we'll be doing that on the 15th. So I'm happy with putting in those two descriptions at that time. Sorry with anyone else. And we still have one outstanding that we need to try and get in on time. But I'd like to discuss the FOAA and I have a specific question. Because well, if state law has changed and we're not up to date, if we do a first reading tonight, we could do a second reading next time and approve it possibly. Which would make us. Current sooner. We had put in the work committee and commission guides to have 30 days to complete your FOA training, but in this it says 120 days. They should probably both be the same, which is the correct.
120 days is the the state statute says that once you've been elected or appointed to the position that requires the training, you have 120 days to. To accomplish that. I think we had had 30 to incentivize.
I stuck it in there just to have a number because I had no idea what the right number was.
Can I just point out something on here as well? If we're doing this in on. Under training number 14, where it says be upon completion of the training course, the elected official or public access officer. It it public access is capitalized there, but officer is not. But then later, public access officer is.
It should all be capitalized.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Yep. I just that's how I mean, my mind just that's.
Greg Durgen's very happy.
I am. I'm that guy. I don't mind telling you. I'm that guy.
I would like this to be current and abiding by state law. So if no one else has anything to discuss, I would. Make a motion that we accept this as a first reading and move it to the next meeting for any changes and or approval.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve this amended FOAA document as submitted. Is there any discussion? All in favor in person? Sean Keegan.
I am in favor audibly.
Thank you. Your audible acknowledgement is appreciated. I think that brings us to the end of our meeting. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, go ahead, Sean.
All right. It has been moved.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor in person? Sean Keegan.
Still in favor.
Yes, sir. All right. Thank you very much. We're done.